6:30.
Yep, 6:35.
Therefore, I'll call the meeting to order. Town of Lee Right to Know Law Meeting Checklist is Chairman of the Select Board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis. In accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 Pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone and additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing a Zoom platform for this electronic meeting, while members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number 1-646-558-8656 and entering meeting ID 85129916736 and password 124855, or by entering the same information through zoom.us. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public on how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee's website at leenewhampshire.org. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-5414. And D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled to another time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Also, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know Law. I'm going to pass this over to the Chairman at this point and take it away.
Okay, so I need to do the roll call meeting?
Yes, you do.
All right, you'll, I'll call your name off and you respond, present, and whether you have anyone in the room with you. Pat Barber?
I'm present. I have no one in the room.
John La Chorus?
Present and no one's in the room.
Tom Murdock, present and no one in the room. Scott Bugby?
I'm here and nobody else is in the room.
Cord Blomquist?
You're muted, Cord.
Here and by myself. No one is in the room.
Julie Glover?
Present, no one's here.
Tom Dronesfield?
Present, no one here.
Carrie Brown?
Present, no one's here.
Rebecca Hawthorne?
I'm here. Joe St. George is milling about, and I have my child here. Does that count?
No, it doesn't count.
All right.
Great. We are ready to begin then, I guess? Do we?
You have the floor.
All right. First, we have Chief Tom Dronesfield and the police, the police.
Good evening, everyone. So as I've done in the past years, in order to save some time, rather than go through every line item on the budget, I'll touch on the ones that have changed, and then I will go into the reasons for the changes and any requests that we have. The first change you'll see is in patrol wages. From 145,506 to 191,506, that's $46,000 for an additional patrol officer. The next line item that you see a change in is the officer holiday pay, which obviously changes if we are awarded that officer, the holiday wages have to change. Under the part-time patrol officer, remove $10,000 from that, and we'll get into that later, the reason for that. Overtime was decreased by about $4,347. We have a new line item. For you have the clerical replacement, you'll see that was zeroed out, and I'll explain that further on down. We have a new line item, which is the police attorney fee, $11,387. We'll talk about that in depth in a little bit. You'll see a decrease to cellphones and an increase to the lease agreements contracts, and a small increase to the Stratford County dispatch fee. So this will be my third year requesting for additional staffing, another officer. We continue to get busier and busier every year, and this year, even with the quote-unquote COVID shutdown, we're busier than we've ever been. For the fiscal year, we're at 192 arrests already, and a good majority of those arrests are felony arrests, which are serious crimes. Some have involved firearms. Most of them have involved drug sales and forfeitures. Those arrests take up a great deal of time because it's not just arresting a person, it's seizing the vehicle, applying for a search warrant, documenting all the evidence. We had one arrest where we interrupted, one of our officers interrupted a gentleman, a young man breaking into cars, and from that arrest and the seizure of his car and a subsequent search warrant, seized 237 pieces of stolen property out of that one vehicle. So it's keeping our officers off the road a lot. And out of those, the felony arrests, for this time period last year, we've seen 175% increase in felonies, and nine of those involve weapons. So the, and this is all generally in the overnights, unfortunately, when we have one officer on by themselves. The town is getting bigger, as we all know. The circle is getting bigger. So I understand, you know, trying to keep the budget increases down as much as possible. So if in the past I was going to zero out the part-time line item, put all of that towards a full-timer, that essentially only gives us eight extra hours of coverage, turning a 32-hour position into a 40-hour position. At this point, eight hours extra does not help us. I also know the retirement system has changed. When a full-time person who is retired wants to work, they can't work 32 hours anymore, they can only work 24. And most likely, whoever we get to fill that position is going to be a retired person. So that's why I took the $10,000 out of that, or the monies out of that, to put towards the full-time officer to try to offset some of that cost, and it still leaves me enough to fund 24 hours of part-time help to assist during the week. We've got an amazing crew here. Experienced, they've been with us for quite some time now, even the younger guys. They're hard chargers, they're very busy. The one complaint that I keep hearing is being short-staffed. And one example is, one of our officers is in the Army National Guard. He was gone the better half of the second, the better part of the second half of July for guard duties. Came back, worked two shifts, and then got activated because of COVID, and he's been gone ever since. And I just found out he's gone at least through the end of October. We don't know beyond that. So that's put quite a strain on our officers, trying to cover all of that, along with being as busy as we're being. And that's the one complaint that I do hear from them is the staffing issues. So that's why, again, I'm trying for another full-time officer to help offset that and get it so that we're not having people on by themselves. Officer Montville, early Sunday morning, got a call for suspicious vehicle at the Kirkwood Corners Nursing Home, pulled in and by herself, on by herself, it was 3 o'clock in the morning. Vehicle was stolen. Male or female occupants of the vehicle had multiple warrants for their arrests from Stratford County, Somersworth Police Department, et cetera. And she had to start reaching out to Epping. Luckily, State Police sent somebody, Barrington sent somebody down. But things can go bad quickly and before those responding backup units arrive. And she's there by herself with these two people who are committing a felony.
So Chief, if you don't mind me interrupting, if you, if we add the one person, what, how do you utilize them? Do you put them on nights so we don't have a single, we don't have a single at night, or are you going to put them somewhere else? There's no, there's absolutely no doubts, based on everything I've looked at that says this isn't going to get better, it's going to get worse. And I think that's true for the surrounding towns, too.
Correct. My main concern now is the nights. I'm here during the day, so I can technically be a second officer, which has, that has increased a lot because now the day shift officers are doing a lot of the follow-up work for the officers, the work the officers in the night shifts created. So while they're tied up with either entering property or creating warrants or doing follow-up investigations, I'll cover the calls, the routine calls that come in. But yeah, they would go to a night shift to try to fill that gap that we have. At least, it's not going to fill every gap. One officer isn't going to fill seven days of gaps, but we'll get them on the latter half of the week, which tends to be the busier shifts.
Okay.
The clerical replacement, the $7,404 that was in there to hire Jess to work with Robin, I zeroed that line item out, but what I'd like to do is move it into the attorney. The Board already knows, we've discussed this. Because we are so busy, the amount of cases that we have, typically, one of us handles the prosecution. I used to do it, and now Lieutenant La Liberty's doing it, but the problem is, it's taking up a majority of his shift, which takes him off the road. And a lot of times, court is when he's on a day off. He's handling telephonic cases from home. So we looked into hiring an attorney. We were able to secure Steve Carell's. He's done a great job so far. He's fitting right in. And I was able to find the funds within my current budget for the rest of the year, and he was, gave a quote of $11,387, which we talked to several attorneys, that was a very reasonable price. So part of that, I would like to use that $7,040 from clerical, and then I would take $4,347 out of overtime to fund the rest of it. And I feel that can be justified because I won't be paying the lieutenant as much overtime for handling these cases at home on those days off. Any questions on that?
I'll hold my questions until the end, Chief.
Okay. Telephone, cellphones. We were able to secure some plans that saved us money, so we're able to reduce that by $1,900. Cellphone reimbursement, currently only myself and the lieutenant get the cellphone reimbursement. When in all actuality, all of our officers use their cellphones all shift long for police business. They're available 24 hours a day if we need to call them in, if something happens, if somebody calls us sick, we need to have them come in for work. And I tell you, again, I can't, I can't speak enough about how dedicated our people are, this crew that we've got. It's just, it's amazing how hard they work and how dedicated they are. And they're actually working on stuff at home on their days off because they want to see it through. And again, they're using their own personal cellphones to do that. And I think, and they've been doing it for a long time, and I think it's, it's time that, you know, we recognize that in, that they get the cellphone reimbursement of $30 a month to go towards their plan because they do use it a lot. You know, a lot of times when something's happening here, I send it out via a text to all of them, so their phones are important, and they always respond right back. They're very good like that. And to do this would be less expensive than purchasing phones for each cruiser that they would use on shift. The next increase is to the lease agreements and contracts. We went back to 2015, 2016, reviewed all of them, and these are just your basic contractual increases. So we're looking for a $1,600 increase in what we see to be projected increases for that line item. And then you'll see the lease agreements and contracts broken down, justifying that, that amount, what we currently pay. Stratford County Dispatch, we've been advised that the county commissioners want to do a 5% increase each year to try to get us back. They went, I don't know, seven, eight years without doing an increase. They actually got themselves behind the eight ball on that. All the chiefs got together and felt that a 5% increase over each year for so many years to get them back upright was justified. They are in a different budget season than we are, so we usually get that, the increase memo after we've already done our budget. So we know it's going to be 5%, which is, it's $370. It's pretty minimal. The rest of the budget, all the other line items will remain the same. I did just find out today, we haven't been able to order a cruiser yet because they hadn't started production, and I found out that they are, and we're able to order them. The only problem is, they've gone up about $4,500. Now, I'm thinking I can offset that by trading in the car that we're going to take off the road like I did last year, so that should help offset that. And we're at a point now where we don't have to buy all new equipment like we've done in the past. Our equipment's all up to date, it's all in very good condition, so most of it, we can just swap over. So we'll be able to save some money there. So altogether, the total increase requested is about 5.1%. And the rest is just the breakdown of our line items that you already saw earlier. That's about it. I'm hoping any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Do you want to go, Scott?
I can. I'm going to monopolize the floor for a little bit. Back to the beginning, in terms of the new person, you mentioned that Frenchie is coming off prosecution, so that should give you some extra time with Frenchie, right?
Well, it's not extra time. It's time we've lost.
Well, he's not going to be doing prosecution so he can do other stuff that he hasn't been doing, so that is some additional time for you. Have you ever thought about taking, you said the retirees can only work 24. Have you thought about taking on two retirees instead of hiring a new person?
Yeah, I can tell you, the problem with that is going to be, I need somebody who can work midnight shifts, and you're not going to get somebody who worked 25, 30 years, retired, is going to want to work a midnight shift.
All right.
That, that position would mainly help out the day shift a couple of days a week when we're doing follow-ups and things of that nature.
All right. The other question I have, and maybe I'm just out of tune, but you've got some photography services for two new employees, $425 for each new employee. What does she do?
What was that now?
The photographer for two new employees on page, oh, there's no page numbers, under lease agreements and contracts. What is that? Are you trying to tell us that it costs $425 for photography for a new employee? What's, what is that? Can you explain that, please?
Yeah, let me just pull that up. That may have been a one-time thing. We just do them once at a time from Candace Pratt?
Yep.
Yeah, pull that up. Yeah, Candace Pratt Photography. Yeah, we don't, that's not an every, every-year thing. That can be taken out of there. That's, that's fine. There was a while because we were, people were leaving, hiring new people. It was a regular thing that we were doing department photographs for the website and for the entryway.
Okay.
But I'm fine with removing that.
So if you're talking about getting a new person, aren't you going to need something in there to take their?
Well, we have, we have other means now that are a lot less expensive.
Okay, well, maybe it's just me, but that's an awful lot of money just for two people.
Yep, no, I agree.
All right. The other question I had is, do we have any money left in the drugs, forfeiture, seizure account?
It's about $67.
Oh, I thought you just, I thought you and I spoke and you were getting some.
That, that'll take months.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that takes, takes months to get. The case has to be adjudicated.
Oh, okay.
And then it has to go through a whole forfeiture process with the Attorney General's office. So yeah, that takes time.
All right. My other question is not related to your budget, but in terms of the thing, in terms of expanding the evidence room, has that been solved?
It's done. It came out fabulous.
Okay, so that's all done?
That's all done.
Okay.
I actually had to, had to chase them down. I just got the invoice this week.
So there's no additional ongoing operating cost for any of those changes you made?
No, no, it's all done.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any further questions for Tom?
This actually is a question for Julie. By adding another policeman, how much cost does that add for us for medical and all that kind of stuff?
Again, you know, we base, when we calculate these costs, we base it on a family plan. So based on the family plan, full-time officer, but reducing the hours for the part-time officer, it's a net increase of $79,615.
Thank you.
Sure.
No other questions?
Tom, could you talk a little bit more about the attorney position? Is that for set hours, or it's kind of a funny number?
Yeah, he, so he went the lower end of the spectrum. He's a mass attorney. He's, he just put himself through law school about two years ago after he retired after a career as an engineer. And he interned with the Salem Police, Salem Lake Police Department. So he basically just, he doesn't need the money. He wants to get in it, he enjoys it. So he went to the lower end of the spectrum on a pay range of what attorneys usually get for prosecuting, and it's four days a week. He's here for about four hours a day. And he will adjust that based on trial dates and things of that nature. But he will come in here, prepare cases, send letters out, subpoenas, contact attorneys to make plea agreements, things of that nature. It's all just, it's time-consuming, a lot of phone calls, a lot of paperwork.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you. Everyone have a good evening.
You too. Thanks, Scott.
Nice. Thank you.
All right. Do we have the library here? I think we do. You're muted, though.
Not anymore. I like to keep, I like to keep a low, you know, quiet.
Low profile until you're ready. Do we need to go through the roll call and stuff again with Ruth entering, or just?
No, we don't.
Call on her. We don't. Okay. Ruth, then, please.
As long as Ruth says that she's by herself.
Are you by yourself, Ruth?
No. My husband's in the other room, and there's three trustees attending so far.
Who are they? Okay, then I guess we should clarify that. Go ahead and let us know who is in the room and their names and?
Anna Marie Gazowski, and I'm alone in my room. Even though it says Paul, it's different.
Oh, okay.
Katrinka Polakia. Unless the cat's around, I think I'm alone, if it matters. And Deborah Shanda, and I am alone.
Okay, Ruth, you have the floor.
All right. Hi. Really odd, using these headphones today. I have just a short little thing I'd like to read to you about what we've been doing lately and a little bit of a history of our children's programming, because one of the things I would like to propose is that our children's librarian moved to a full-time, a five-day-a-week position. So I just have a little, some statistics and some interesting things to say, if that's all right. Our Youth Services Librarian joined us in June 2019, just at the end of the school year programming, and just at the start of the summer reading program. We already had a plan in place for the programs we were offering, but summer times are a different kind of environment in the library. Our new librarian was well-loved in Lee, and as a result, attendance at our programs were seeing immediate increases. After-school programs were full to overflowing, and summer reading participation almost doubled from the previous fiscal year. The demand for more programs, holding them more often and at more times during the week, were among the requests from parents, grandparents, and caregivers. Our circulation in youth materials started seeing marked increases. By January 2020, we had a change in staff, giving us the opportunity to increase the youth services position to four days a week. She had been three days before, and the occasional weekend hours. This allowed us the option of spreading out our programs so that there was more time to develop and hone our programming, and time to prepare for those programs. Then, March 2020, COVID-19 hit. The library went into complete shutdown of the facility, staff preparing and working remotely, and the library offering curbside pickup for the next 10 days. The Youth Services Librarian started within the week offering daily Facebook Storytime and daily reading of an older kid's chapter book. Over the last two weeks of March, we had 467 minutes of online participation, which is incredible for eight days. In April, over 1,300 minutes of viewing. In May, 1,356, that were 7,878 individuals. June saw approximately 120 participants engaging in our online programming. In March alone, we gave out 500 craft kits. July and August, we hosted our first virtual summer reading program, which included shared virtual programs with Madbury Durham Libraries, including live animal shows, magic, and music. We gave out over 1,042 craft kits during the two months of summer reading program. Needless to say, that took plenty of hours in preparation, on top of the daily chapter reads and weekly storytimes. As COVID waxes and wanes and hopefully goes away, the demand for us to maintain current programs and expand them will be there. We are already starting to see more and more families returning to the library. By the way, we open to the public on June 22nd, are pretty much our full hours, 41 hours a week. We are maintaining our popular curbside pickup, and we do have those families that regularly request stacks of materials, and those who like to come browse and choose their own. This COVID time, when many families are dealing with remote learning, where in-home learning can be a trying time, the normalcy of visiting their local library is important to them and to their children. We meet this changing and challenging role in the library and strive to keep up with demands of our patrons while developing content for programs, preparing collections for programs, administrating collection development while finding new paths of engagement in a pre, mid, and post-pandemic world. Having a full-time youth services line would allow us to be able to provide library services more fully than before, be able to expand programs as needs arise, and be ready to nurture the youngest of our patrons into becoming lifelong readers, and support the education and lifelong learning of our youth and adults. All that being said, it's been an amazing All that being said, it's been an amazing six months during COVID, interesting time. So uh as you see in our budget requests, we are asking um to increase our children's librarian from four days a week, which is thirty-four hours, to five days a week, which would be forty hours. Um, we're able to cover the costs of the payroll in our existing payroll, but we don't have the uh costs needed for the benefits package, and so that's what we're asking for. This, and as I heard Julie talk about, you, we, we do know that the increase in the, in the um New Hampshire retirement has increased. And that uh next June I will be retiring, so we have to account for a new library director who will possibly be looking for medical insurance, so that's another item that has to be added to that, which I think we've been able to get that number in there. So yeah, we sent you a lot of different pages, things you're, some might be familiar with, some you might not be. Um, we do generate a little bit of revenue, it's certainly not, um, doesn't cost, uh, cover the cost, like we have a copier uh income, we charge ten cents a page for black and white colors and twenty-five cents a page for color copies. Um, we, if there's a, a commission or a committee in town that needs to use a printer, we charge them about half that. Um, so we don't make a lot, on, on the revenue page, um, what tab is that, probably about the the third page, the revenue source, um, shows approximately what we've gotten. Um, the actual financial report is the last page that shows the correct numbers, I made some mistakes on this revenue source page, but the financial report, the final page in our packet, does show what our actual income was. For instance, we, we made six hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy cents in copier income, you know, literally nickels and dimes, but, but our costs for the copier were twenty-four hundred seventy-six, so you know, they're, they offset our revenue, they offset, you know, our expenses, but they certainly don't cover it. Let's see. What else can I tell you about our budget? Anyone have any questions about it, or?
Uh, I have a couple, if you don't mind, can you, can you tell me what, what is in the ancillary PR expense?
Julie? Sure. Probably explain that, yeah.
That's the cost um for the library personnel's retirement system costs, medical and dental insurance costs, short-term, long-term disability insurance, life insurance.
Okay.
Workers' compensation, social security. As Ruth pointed out, the reason you see such a large increase in that line is um Ruth is gonna be retiring, and we don't know who's going to be hired, so again, we assume um for budgeting purposes, that that person is going to take a family medical plan.
Yeah.
You had a second question, Carrie?
Uh, well, I thought I did, but I don't stay on this, I don't stay on this piece of paper, so.
Wow, shortest meeting ever.
Julie, that PR, that thirty-five thousand dollar increase, is that also the increase to move um the youth services librarian to full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
The cost for that change is about sixteen thousand dollars.
Julie, can you give us one of the, like you did for the police department, or I don't know, maybe the police department did? Give us one of those one-sheeters, like you did for the police officer?
Yep.
For this particular person, I don't.
I'm a little surprised I didn't do that already, but yes, I can.
Can you do that and send it to us?
Yep.
So we know the implications, because a- as, like in the police department, we see part of the salary layer, but the rest of the stuff is in your budgets, so.
Correct.
So if you could do that for this particular one, that would be great, so we know what the implications are of that particular change.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can actually.
There it is.
Yeah, it's not, it's not in the simple format, though, that I did for the police department, so I'll do that and get that to everybody tomorrow.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Um, I have a question, and I know in the last board meeting that um the trustees did a nice presentation about the changes internal to their building. Um, are there gonna be any operational changes because of that? Uh, in terms of pluses, minuses, or, or different things? I don't know if the trustees have a handle on that at the moment.
I don't, I don't think there's any operational changes, and maybe one of the other trustees can speak on this, but um since this is next year, July first budget, um, if we make any changes, they probably won't um happen to the operating budget in the next fiscal year, that probably would be the year after that.
Okay, alright.
Um, I'm not anticipating any changes, you know, with the, the current layout, or even if we are able to expand some space. We should be able to do it with a three-pole full-time and a part-timer.
Okay. Um, the last question I have is, and I know, we've done this a few times, and the library trustees probably have a better handle on this than I do. But usually when you hire a new director, the, usually the salary increases. Is that, are you anticipating that happening again when Ruth leaves? Ruth, quote, close your ears so you don't hear this, so. But is that something that the trustees are anticipating, or are you anticipating hiring somebody at the same level? What is your intention?
I'll speak to that if I can.
Okay.
Um, at this point, we, it's really um premature to think about whether or not the person will be at the same level or not, but we think it would be as far as um experience and, and education, things like that.
Okay, alright. Didn't want us to get to that point, and you guys, you know, went out and tried to find somebody, and they're looking at seventy or seventy-five thousand, you know, that kind of thing, so.
I, I wouldn't anticipate that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, can I, may I say something on, onto that? Um, when we've looked at all the other salaries in the state, we're, you know, it's, you know, we're in a pretty good position, so I wouldn't anticipate having to do that, but we'll be checking comparables um when we get to that point.
Okay.
We had raised it up earlier and um to be competitive, but I'm not anticipating having to make a huge jump.
Okay. And the last question, this is more for the trustees, usually when the Board of Selectmen talk about salary increases either across the board, or salary merit pool, or something like that, the trustees have additionally done the same thing the town does, is that the trustees' intention this year as well? Or do you have some other ideas?
Well, at this point, um, we would expect that it would be the same as last year. Um, we usually, um, whenever you allocate the, the money for the merit pool, or whatever you wanna call it, then we um deal with that.
Okay, just checking, thank you. Any further questions?
I'm all set.
Everybody all set?
There's a hand up, I believe.
Well, that was me, but I got, but I snuck in.
Are we all set?
Do, do you want any more statistics?
You are a numbers person.
Uh, yes, yes.
That's good.
I think we're all set, then.
Yeah, we're good.
Right, thank you very much, Ruth.
Okay, thank you.
And Deborah, and Katrina, and.
Yes, thank you.
And Marie, not Paul. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that concludes the ABC's portion of things, right, for tonight?
Could I ask one question last, when we met ourselves, we, um, the select board had not yet met to discuss what their charge was to the departments. Has that happened yet, and what did they tell the departments?
Oh, right.
What we, what we had said is that uh pretty much a flat budget. However, there's been, I think, Mr. Bubbe brought in the fact of some things go up that you don't have much control on, lease agreements or uh other areas, those things could be taken out from the flat budget. Yes, that was my understanding, Scott, you can correct me up in the row?
Um, that was my request, yes, yes, you, you encapsulated my thoughts exactly.
Thank you, we think alike, it's good.
Oh, that's scary, John, that's. Yeah, the idea was, they don't have control over those particular costs, so why hold them, hold that against them? Um, but we're looking for a zero budget. I think from my, from my point of view, I don't think the other shoe is falling yet. I think um we have talked a significant amount of time in terms of the tax bill that went out in July. Uh, we were ahead of last year. Um, I think when the tax bill two goes out, hopefully, everybody will pay their taxes, but I, I think we need to wait and see what, what's happening. I think there's a lot of people out of work. Um, and I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that we just can't keep taxing and taxing and taxing when people are out of work. They just can't pay those particular things, so. I think we just have to be sensitive, so. And I think when we go to set the budget, or what we're gonna present, we should know in terms of what those numbers are for the tax and tax bill for this fiscal year, so. That's my thoughts.
Scott, when will you have a handle on those numbers? Like, when, what date will you know that tax receipts aren't coming in at the level that they usually do?
Well, the tax bills go out, and they probably do the first part of December. And it seems like, you know, that was the second, maybe third week of July. Uh, maybe Julie has some better information about that, but probably the second week of December, I would think, we would know, a good, have a good idea, but.
Right, I mean, there's still, as, as the board knows, there's a tail to the collections. So say in the first month, hmm, you know, a good ninety percent, I, I would say, comes in, but then there's still a couple hundred thousand dollars that dribbles in. So we're still on track, actually, as, as Mr. Bubbe mentioned, we're still a little better off than we were last year in terms of the rate of collections. But we just don't know what's gonna happen in December, so. Um, I would say we would know by February if, if we're not gonna be collecting what we expect. So it is gonna come down to the wire.
So the ABC actually might need to do a budget, you know, contingent on weather, because we're pretty much done by December, so. Um, you know, February doesn't help as far as what we're gonna be able to do. We'll probably have to put a budget together based on what we believe it should be, assuming we're gonna get the tax money in, and then, of course, if not, then it would have to be adjusted.
Yeah, 'cause your, your presentation to the board is, I think, tentatively scheduled for the fourteenth of December.
Right.
So you'll have a little bit of an idea of how the first two weeks went. Um, but you won't have everything. But, you know, if it's looking fine at that point, you know, probably we should be good, but if we're lagging, and people haven't been paying, 'cause they can't, you know, they can't, I think that's something we're gonna have to take a look at when we meet that last time, you see, so.
My sense is that you probably, at this point, I, I think Tom said it, is that you prepare the budget, what you think the needs are, then you have a backup budget in case there is a shortfall.
Yeah.
What things you would, nobody wants to talk about, but what things you would cut out or not approve.
Yeah.
Or reduce, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, based on what we need to do.
Yeah.
Uh, don't we, don't we also have an issue that's, that's gonna be coming up as soon as we start looking at the uh, the uh new building, if you would, I'll call it, uh, as to the impact of uh those costs and what it's gonna do to next year's expenses?
Oh, that's.
I've already included what I've estimated to be those expenses
Yeah.
in the fiscal twenty-two budget.
Yeah, that's one of the things that Julie included, there's a whole spreadsheet about that, it was a PDF.
Oh, good, I'd like to see it, because it, it's obviously gonna have an impact on uh setting next year's budget.
Julie, can you pop that up on your screen?
Hmm, let's see, let's try.
Okay, and the magic happened.
Yeah, yeah, let's try.
Is that daily building estimated expenses?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's a good name for it.
Yeah. We need to get more creative.
She's got the lease in there, the alarm, ever-source, and the propane cost, so.
Estimated estimated expenses.
It took me a few minutes to figure out what UFB was, but I finally figured it out.
Oh, okay.
What is it? Unassigned fund balance.
Unassigned fund balance.
So, just to give some background to the uh ABC, when the board first made the decision that we needed to move into a different building, we could not make this building COVID-safe. Um, and then we found the daily building, and we started going forward with the cost estimates were. Um, the select board petitioned the Department of Revenue Administration for an emergency appropriation of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Those funds will come out of the um unassigned fund balance, so it does not impact the tax rate. Because there have been delays um with moving into the building, there's a carryover from the money that we were um estimating for the lease from fiscal twenty-one into fiscal twenty-two. That's why the first four months of fiscal twenty-two said UFB. I spoke with DRA, and we are not restricted to those funds in fiscal twenty-one. It's like we're budgeting for a project, and the funds just sit there until the project is complete.
I'm sorry, what does UFB mean?
Unassigned fund balance.
Oh, okay.
Julie, is it possible, can you send the ABC copy of that spreadsheet you did in terms of the estimated building expenses for the daily building?
Should have been.
Oh, okay.
Right, somebody?
Yes.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
It was included in the four different emails I sent last night.
Okay, great. It's there.
Now, this, of course, is a guesstimate
Mm-hmm.
based on information that was provided to us from Daily that they got from their tenant. Um, their electric and propane costs were higher than what I've presented here. Um, the former tenant had anywhere from thirty-five to fifty employees, and it was a technology company, so they had a lot of computers, and computers, as you know, take a lot of electricity. So I cut the electric bill down based on that. I also cut the propane costs down, because we have a really um good price that we pay for propane, and I made the assumption that they were not getting the price that we're getting. We've asked for actual bills, so I can confirm that, but I haven't seen those yet.
Does that building have a generator, a backup generator?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, and I believe it's a whole-building generator.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any updates on the DOT?
DOT wants a left-turning lane, Mr. Daily hired an engineer, uh, and the engineer is trying to set up a meeting with DOT to go over what he believes can be done. What we're trying to do is get the turn lanes in by painting new lines rather than expanding the pavement. Um, but as of this afternoon, uh, the engineer had not heard from DOT yet.
Of course, if we had to expand the payment, Mr. Daily will be taking care of that, correct?
Yes. Yes, just remember, though, that the lease contains an out, that if he decides whatever DOT asks him to do is too onerous, he can end the lease.
Yes.
Seems like something that an afternoon and a couple buckets of paint could solve, so I hope that they come to that conclusion.
Right, right, yeah.
A roller, no.
It doesn't. There's always a study involved with these things, I don't know.
They can't create a traffic issue, I guess, so.
Sure.
Have to study it. Alright. Anything else?
Next meeting is the sixth, we get the town clerk, ag commission, conservation, energy, and sustainability, so.
And what I can understand is that from the emails, a lot of them are not gonna ask for anything, at least some of the committees and commissions.
Conservation Commission is meeting right now, I think.
Mm-hmm.
So. They're gonna decide if they're gonna ask. they're going to decide if they're going to ask for anything.
Julie, do you have anything for the Board of Selectmen?
Uh, not at this time. Obviously, you know, if anybody reads through all of the material, I realize there's a lot of it. If you have any questions, just let me know. I will be in the office all day tomorrow.
Okay. What I was asking, is there anything we need to for this meeting?
Nope.
No, okay. Are you all done, uh, Chairman of ABC?
So, yeah, ABC meeting is concluded. Do I have to do motions and?
No, I could do that for you.
You can do close out everything?
Yes.
Alright.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye or wave their hand.
Uh, wave.
Aye.
Julie, before you leave.
Yep.
Um, next Monday, we have a board meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, Conservation Commission wants to do a Zoom at seven. Can, do you want, well, I guess this is really a question for you and Karen. I did it last time. Do you want me to do it again, or do you want to handle that one? How do you want to deal with that?
Uh, I guess I'll have to talk to Karen and see what her thoughts are.
All right, if, well, I'm offering, I'm there anyways, I'll do it and do like I did last time and upload it, so Steve can put it on the thing, but if she wants to do it, that's perfectly fine. Just let me know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Hey.
Thanks.
Good night.
Night.